Terry is so good that saying it's in an email means that there could be copious emails.
Thank you.
January 21.
Thanks.
We are live, President Haynes.
This is a heads up, I can talk.
I would like to call, good morning, I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on January 25 at 9:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols. Terry?
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org, under People, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting, excuse me, is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Hildigard Ag-
Present.
Hild- Aldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Joshua Elizondo. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunal Akkis. Irma Ogwenn.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Present.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Roy Shabazzian.
Here.
Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Julia Tarasova.
Present.
Las Villa Lobos. And Joseph Williams. President Haynes, we do have quorum.
Thank you. We're now going, we'll proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked Board Member Shaw to lead us in the, in the pledge. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm hoping that board members have had a chance to look at the, the, the agenda. If there are any questions or changes to it, we can, we can take those now. I don't see any hands raised, so I'm gonna provide much of a report that I, I made yesterday, and it is because it's for the public record. We had a very packed agenda, but one of the issues that have been top of mind for me for a number of years, not, not just since the pandemic, not just since the death of George Floyd, there have been hundreds, literally thousands of deaths, just in, literally just in the last 15 years. If we, if we take history, there have been tens of thousands of deaths. Lynchings in this country didn't stop until well into the 1950s, 1960s. So George Floyd's death was a watershed because America got a chance to see it on television live, and a courageous young woman, teenager at the time, took video for more than nine minutes on what happened to George Floyd. And so, he is a symbol of what has occurred in America for eons. The chancellor of the system, Chancellor Oakley, made a call to action for the entire system to look at policing and look at training. That call of action resulted in a task force that was convened of experts across the country to look at campus climate and to look at campus policing. As a result of a year-long endeavor with a lot of discussion, a lot of data, yesterday, the Board of Governors had a first reading of the regulations, but also of the recommendations of this body. As I said, not only am I a member of the Board of Governors, I am also a local elected member trustee here in Sacramento. And I personally have seen and witnessed challenges on our campus. I am happy to say that those, those have been met with a, with a board and with college leadership that is moving in the right direction. But it was very clear to me that as a result of those recommendations, we still have work to do. And the system, our system colleges still have work to do. And so I was very pleased with the recommendations. I was pleased with the questions that were asked yesterday. And I think that because of the commitment of the system, we will, our colleges will be better able to reflect what is needed, not only in terms of organizational infrastructure, but to allay the fear of our students. And I have firsthand knowledge of that fear. I was at a, just to share, I was, I was at a, a rally on campus, the result of a incident that happened on our campus. It was peaceful. There were probably 40 of us, faculty, students, most of them students of color, but other allies in that, in that, in that group. And our officers, who are wonderful individuals, but they came, they stood at the periphery, and they stayed, they, they, and this was after, this was basically maybe a week after the, an incident. And they stay, they stood at military stance. Now, if you are not familiar with military stance, I am, and most, most folks are, who have had, who have been in situations where, where police have been there. And I have to tell you from my own personal experience, I was there, I saw it, and more than, more importantly, I felt it. I felt fear. And I know that our students did too, because they told me so. It was peaceful. And what they also said was, you know, we can go to other rallies where this, this is not the issue, and the police, our police don't show up. It's only at, at rallies like this that they show up, and they show up. And, and so, we've got a lot of work to do. And I'm, I'm talking about a district that is very receptive to change. We, we, it's, we can't do it fast enough, but those recommendations will move us, along with everyone else, along the path where our students don't have to come on our campus and feel that when an officer comes toward them, that it's, it's something that they've done. So with that, I want to transition, because, and I know that my colleagues have heard this yesterday, but again, I want to do this for the, the record, and because, and, and I realize that for, for, in many cases, we will not see our students. They're gonna be in their homes, or in their workplace, but I have to tell, and that's wonderful, but I have to tell you, given our demographics, those individuals may have issues when they walk out their door. So, so that's the reason why I'm sort of repeating much of this. The transition was difficult for me to make, but I, I put these, I put these two things together, together because they are linked. Um, there are ti- and, and I will start by saying, there are times when not to say a thing out loud is not just to be silent, but to be complicit. And so I am keenly aware of where we are, and I will not be complicit as a result of silence. So I believe that this is a very dangerous moment in American history. I say that as an African-descended woman who has children, who have been touched every single one, both of them, and grandchildren who have been touched by law enforcement, who have been touched by not a feeling like they are the other. I believe I said, I, I believe that January 6 represented a five-alarm fire. We've spoken of a living democracy, but in reality, but the reality is that it's been a work in progress since the writing of our constitution. We've only been a true democracy for the last 57 years. Why, why last 57 years? It's since the passage of the Voting Rights Legislation of 1964. It is when significant numbers of Americans who have been here for 400 years got the right, the franchise, to actually vote, because there was a constitutional amendment to explicitly say that. That right is now at risk, which means our democracy is at risk. Expanding the franchise is a must in a democracy, and therefore, the right to vote has to be sacrosanct. We are becoming, if we're not already, we are becoming a multiracial, multi-ethnic country. And the response in some quarters is the reemergence of white nationalism and authoritarianism. We don't have the luxury of thinking that California is immune. It is not. We are not an island, even though we may wish it to be so. We are a part of the national fabric. We must be engaged in the, as individuals, but also as educators and those who care about education. We have the awesome responsibility of educating and training this next generation of Americans. Each and every one of us has to do whatever it is in our power to do to ensure that that democracy prevails. As I said, it's a five-alarm fire, a dangerous moment in our democracy and in our history. I want to close by saying that each one of you is a part of this puzzle. You serve at, you serve because, on this board, as well as on the Board of Governors. And to, to the ideals and the values, I know you do, because I know each one of you. I, I listen to your, your comments and your questions, and I am, I'm very proud to serve with you. I'm proud of the work that we're doing. I'm, I'm proud of where the system is going. I'm proud of Calbright and its start, its adherence to values of making certain that we are serving those who are least served by our systems. And I want to thank you for that service. And with that, I would ask that our president, CEO, give her report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. And thanks, President Haynes, particularly for the comments and the sentiments. I think you are in good company in terms of not just the leadership of Calbright, but top to bottom within the organization. Most of us, for most of us, we see and we recognize all of the things that the communities of learners that we serve are confronting, and it is the reason we are here in this moment, trying to have the impact that we are trying to have. So your, your comments are shared and much appreciated. Happy belated New Years to you all. Since this is the first board meeting of the year, I wanted to take the opportunity to reflect a bit on what we accomplished in 2021, which was my first calendar year as the non-interim president of the college. Just before I begin, though, I'd like to provide an update to the board with regard to the formation of our local California School Employees Association chapter. Calbright and CSEA met earlier this month at a settlement conference facilitated by the Public Employees Relations Board, PERB. Both parties walked away at the end of the day with an agreement that was to be put in writing and circulated following the MLK holiday weekend. We presented the agreement in writing outlining the terms that were agreed to at the table by CSEA and Calbright. CSEA then informed us that they had changed their position on a term agreed to in the settlement conference, and we are now waiting to hear back from them. So I will continue to provide updates as the process moves forwards, and wanted to share with you that Calbright remains very committed to a labor market, labor partnership with CSEA. So, next slide, please. I am immensely proud of the Calbright team and what we have achieved in only a short amount of time. For me, if 2021 had a theme, I would say it was a year of growth. We met every milestone outlined in our founding legislation, which includes applying for accreditation and designing and validating three new programs. In April, the board approved our first-ever strategic vision, which extends through 2023 and marks the transition into high-quality growth for our institution. It provides a guide for Calbright's overarching direction with clear goals, but it also serves as a bedrock for our decision-making. And in the spring of 2021, we launched our Customer Relationship Management Technology Program, our CRM program, which offers an opportunity into a very transformational and growing area of the economy that can provide new kinds of career opportunities for our focused learners and their communities. What began as a 30-person pilot in the spring has now grown to an enrollment of more than 160. And we also developed and submitted every requirement detailed in the state ad auditor's report for California due in 2021. We also remain on track for our deliverables this year as well. Now, I'd like to pause here for a moment and be direct. While 2021 was a year in which Calbright grew immensely, it was also a year in which external demands took precious time away from the critical work of serving our students and building this college. Despite this uneven and forceful headwinds, we absorbed these challenges, and we sought to reclaim them as opportunities for learning, for growth, and for progress to better meet our students' needs. The momentum of the progress that we've made in 2021 is what swings us forward with a strong start to 2022. We see clearly the opportunity in front of us to accelerate the pace of our efforts to support our students, whether it's through an upgraded experience that drives stronger student outcomes, through the relationships and partnerships we develop and deepen in communities and regions across the state, or as we launch new programs and opportunities that connect our students with the employment market. Next slide. Now, I'd like to actually talk about our students, our, what we call our animating force. When Calbright was created, it was designed to meet the unique needs of working adults who had fallen through the cracks in America's existing higher education system. Our student body reflects that purpose, and it honors our mission. More than 92% of our learners are over the age of 25, and overwhelming majority have no degree beyond a high school diploma. And from Humboldt County to the inland empire, they enroll in Calbright's programs from nearly every corner of the state. They are working parents and immigrants from Riverside County. They are professionals aspiring to move up within their current organization in Sacramento County. They're adults that are exploring a career change in Los Angeles. And for some, enrolling at Calbright may be their first step towards entering the workforce, or in many cases, re-entering it after a time away. Next slide. And as our enrollments grow, these critical trends continue. Since the start of California's fiscal year, we have grown from 480 students to 850 students, driven by a commitment to revise and reimagine learning and workforce training. The Calbright that students enroll in today is a different college than it was six months ago, and it will be a different college six months from today. This acceleration in enrollment is very exciting, but it is also a part of careful and intentional planning. Our growth comes at a time when student support systems and practices are in place and being proved upon. It comes at a time when we're investing in growing and developing the ranks of our faculty and staff to meet that rising demand. And growth today is really the prelude for chapters yet to come. Calbright's programs require time. You know, most can be completed in slightly less than a year if a student has consistent five to 10 hours a week to dedicate to their curriculum. But we know that many of our learners require flexibility. They're logging in between shifts or after they've put the kids down for the night. In both scenarios, the actions that we're taking now are the seeds for our student successes in the years ahead. Next slide. When we talk about student success, it is also helpful to frame the conversation in the context of how our focused population of learners experiences the education market and the employment market. This is the critical opportunity of what Calbright is. The communities our learners come from are underrepresented in California's public education system, and they're overrepresented in low-paying and dead-end jobs. The recent trends across the community college system indicate that those who are enrolled are dropping out at higher rates during the pandemic amongst this demographic. Rarely is their success, or their lack thereof, the focus of very research-based efforts, efforts to improve equity, to do the things that move the needle for adult learner outcomes. And so at Calbright, we're moving forward quickly to develop and apply the data-driven support systems that invest in the kind of continuous improvement that's dedicated to the learners that we serve. I've had the opportunity to have candid conversation with colleagues across the community college system who work in economic development, and those who work in economic development. We collectively share that goal of supporting these learners in our state. And as the leading edge of the learning curve, Calbright's learning and successes provide that shared value to our sister campuses as we seek in this endeavor together. In the fall, our Student Services and Success Team, alongside other cross-functional teams, launched a proactive outreach initiative. The goal, you know, very simply put, was to engage with learners as early in their Calbright journey as possible, and to empower them by connecting them to tutors, to counselors, and other members of our support team before they encountered barriers. Building on this, we've begun a multi-year partnership with UC Irvine's Top Rank School of Education to build our capacity to apply behavioral science and data analytics to support our activities across the entire student lifecycle. This will not only provide vital information, but it'll allow us to quickly iterate and improve our systems to nurture that student progress, persistence, and completion. And in parallel to the student support endeavors, we are also approaching the question from the other side of the equation, partnering with Teachers College at Columbia University, NSRI International. Calbright was selected as a part of a small nationwide group of colleges to identify best practices for teaching and learning in the nascent field of self-directed learning. And these are the skills that are the essential conditions of our student success, not just in education, but also in their careers. Next slide. Complementing our proactive outreach initiative and the partnerships to propel student success, we've also been able to reimagine how we tell Calbright's story, and most importantly, how we meet our students where they are. We've learned how students access opportunities and changed our approach to meet those needs. The majority of our web traffic, for example, is on mobile devices, so we created new program-specific landing pages that are mobile-friendly. We've created assets to share on social media and in other locations that not only speak directly to potential students, but also provide them with the information they need to feel informed and empowered, and to understand our programs and their connection to workforce opportunities. Next slide. We've created explainer videos that highlight, you know, for example, what a CRM administrator does, why they are key to an organization's success, and that these are some of the roles that are in demand today and will be in the future. Our programs are created to help fill a need within California's workforce, to prepare students to enter growing fields. And a key ingredient of that model is conveying that information in an accessible manner that helps a potential learner actually see themselves in a role that can help them take that leap of faith that's required to advance in the next step in their career. We have flyers on display in communities like Anaheim and Santa Ana, DMV advertisements in focus areas like San Bernardino and Manteca and Modesto. And our digital outreach is specifically designed to reach our focused population, to tell them about the opportunity available here at Calbright. Next slide. Now, I'd like to also turn to the, to Calbright's internal development, which was another critical component to 2021, and it'll be central to our path forward in 2022. As an institution rooted in diversity, equity, and inclusion, I am immensely proud of the work of our DEI Task Force, which has nurtured a community across Calbright to discuss important issues related to inclusion and to our mission and the students we serve. This is paired with the exceptional dedication of our faculty and staff across the college, who bring our mission to life through their work every day. We need to continue to build not only the college, but actually the culture that defines Calbright. And it's a priority, and it will be, to support the teams already in place by hiring new roles from instruction and student success to technology and HR, so that our enrollment and programmatic growth is met with more counselors, tutors, instructors, and actually a holistic expansion of our operational capacity. Next slide. We are entering 2022 with tremendous momentum, and we're also hitting the ground running. Last week, we launched a new program in partnership with SEIU Education Fund. The program is designed to help support incumbent healthcare workers who before, and most certainly throughout the pandemic, have been asked to do more with less. And in early February, we're planning to launch another opportunity focused on the core skills associated with career development. Its mission is to support adult learners, especially displaced workers, to make informed career decisions based on solid self-knowledge, effectively secure meaningful employment, and thrive in a diverse workplace setting in both the immediate future as well as throughout their lives. I will stop there, and I look forward to sharing updates with you about these new programs and others in the months ahead. And thank you again for all your support and help as we work to build success through the new year.
You depend.
Sorry. Now, it's time for us to go into closed session. I don't have my script in front of me. Once we go into closed session, then when we come back, if there are some, some things to report out, we will do so. So I'll see you on the other side.
Madam President.
Yes.
You may, I'm sorry, this is Namita Brown. I, I think, because you don't have your script, this is my reminder that you should call for public comment for closed session before we go into closed session.
Sorry, we do it differently in different places. Is there public comment on closed session?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Thank goodness. Thank you. Well, we'll now go into closed session. See you on the other side. So, thank you. Closed session has concluded, and I would like to note that the board voted unanimously to release an administrator. And closed session was, the rest of closed session was due to a CEO evaluation. And so now we can, oh, and that, and that the, oh, I already said that, sorry. So we now can move to, to our agenda, and the first agenda item is the consent agenda. Can we get a, a motion to approve in a second?
Off the move to approve.
Second.
Agnaldo.
Okay. Who moved? I couldn't hear the, is it, and who's second?
President. Ask if there's any public comment.
Amy, member Casa moved, and Kevin Hall seconded.
Thank you. There's, there's typically no public comment on the, the consent. And I will change that if, if our lawyer says that there, there is.
Madam President, yes, this is Cindy Smith, and we should take a public comment prior to the consent agenda being.
Okay.
By the board.
All right. So is there any public comment?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Very good. Then can I get a roll call vote, please?
Hildigard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo. Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Hi.
Jolena Grande. Jolena Grande. Pamela Haynes.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant- Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Irma Oakwin.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Hi.
Motion carries President Haynes.
Thank you. So we're now moving into our action agenda. So 4.1 is the Vice President of Human Resource, sorry, the Vice President of Human Resources. And we have Jeff Bell, who's going to be presenting.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President and Trustee. We are proposing for the approval of Vice President of Human Resources, Joseph Brumgarner. We've had very large pool of candidates for our Vice President of Human Resources. After a robust hiring process that included extensive application reviews and several rounds of interviews, we recommend him as the best candidate for the job. Joseph Brumgarner comes to us with significant experience in labor relations in the K-12 arena and in the K-12 arena. For the past five years, Joseph served as the Associate Superintendent of People's Services for Fontana Unified School District. And prior to that, Joseph has successfully served as a school district Executive Director of Human Resources, as well as an Assistant Superintendent and Site Administrator for several other school, public school districts in the state of Washington. Joseph holds administrator credentials in both California and Washington, as well as a teaching and a superintendent credential from Washington State. He has multiple professional affiliations, including with the Society for Human Resource Management and the American Association of School Personal Administrators, among others. Joseph is our recommended candidate for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation. We're going to open it up to board comments or questions. I see one hand. Member Grande.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you Jeff for describing the process for which we bring this candidate forward. Could you possibly provide just a little bit more context to the robust hiring process and field of candidates that were vetted? Were the, the faculty and classified involved in the selection committee? Or at any point were their ideas impactful in the selection or the posting for this position?
The, the, the process included an extensive review, the, the faculty wasn't necessarily.
There is, I can go ahead and take this one. So the, the, for, for this position, we had classified staff, particularly folks from our HR team who held some of the subject matter expertise to understand and evaluate the, the needs of the position relative to the needs of the organization. We had 76 applicants, 10 applicants who were actually invited to interview. So it was a very, it's very high numbers of applicants that met minimum qualifications, which was exciting to us. And we ended up doing three rounds of interviews on, on this hiring cycle.
And Chita, is there any movement going forward where all of the constituency groups might have representatives on a hiring committee for these higher level executive positions?
So we, we, it largely depends on the position. And I will tell you frankly, Julina, some of that has a lot to do with the level of an amount of hiring that we are doing. And we could all be sitting in hiring committees, you know, nonstop eight to five, five days a week. But, you know, for example, we have two faculty representatives in our Vice President of Learning and Instruction search. Both of them come through the instructional side. Similarly, we look for that, especially when we're looking, you know, for, for, we did that when we were hiring for our top spot on the student services and support side of things as well. Areas in which both the expertise and the experience that, that faculty have relative to those administrator positions becomes an important factor.
I, I just want to emphasize how impactful it is when we have different voices at the table from different points of view and how beneficial it is to have some of the, the faculty and classified visions when you're looking at these higher level positions for the organization, because it becomes quite collegial and collaborative from the top down when they're involved. They tend to be more vested in the candidate and the candidate's success when they were there at the initial evaluation. So if there's any way that we might be able to involve more of our constituencies that are already part of the employee groups at Calbright, I, I would like us to go that way if possible.
Yes, I mean, and we're certainly, we're, we're in the areas where it's particularly relevant to their experiences. We certainly do that now and look forward to finding more opportunities to, to continue to engage those voices in all aspects of our operations, including hiring.
Are there other trustee board members who have questions, comments? I don't see any hands raised. So is there any public comment on this particular item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Well then, can I get a motion to approve in a second?
I'm moving to approve.
Okay, so.
Anderson Rawlings.
Okay.
Rawlings Anderson.
Either way, I have a motion and a second. Terry, you figure that part out. Would you please roll the call? I mean, call the roll.
Okay. Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Hi.
Amy. Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo. Oh. Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haynes.
Hi.
Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Irma Oakwin.
Hi.
Jennifer.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Raw.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
And Julia Tarasova.
Hi.
Motion carries President.
Thank you. So Terry, you keep on cutting out. I don't know if that's happening for, for everyone else. But your position is so critically important, I want to make, and, and we, and, and we teach these, these areas. So I want to make certain that you have the equipment necessary to do your job well. So I'm just putting that on the public record. With that said, I'm going to move to item 4.2, Calbright College's COVID-19 Prevention Program. Again, we have Jeff Bell who's presenting on this item.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President and Trustees. Today we are presenting the Calbright COVID-19 Prevention Program, known as the CPP. This plan lays out how the college will support a safe and healthy workplace for all employees and minimize the risk of transmission of COVID-19 in our unique remote environment. The documents before you provide the scope, authority and process of one, how we identify and evaluate COVID-19 hazards, two, how we investigate and respond to COVID-19 cases, and three, how we communicate, train and instruct our employees about COVID-19. This information before you is in alignment with CAL OSHA, Center for Disease Control, California Department of Health and, and the Governor's Office. And it follows the regulatory and statutory requirements for the Institutes of Higher Education. Because Calbright operates in a remote fashion, currently there is little face-to-face, obviously, interaction of our employees and no designated onsite offices or facilities that the college operates. When there's a need or desire for employees to meet in person, this document provides the required information to be able to safely conduct our college business. This is a living document and is continually being updated. That's important to remember as we go forward. The California Department of Public Health provides us the latest news, updates and guidance for updating this document. Topics of concern and recent updates in these areas will include masking guidance, physical distancing and vaccination status. Masking guidance is this of January 5 of this year, and it extends requirements for universal masking indoor statewide through February 15th of this year. The California Department of Public Health is requiring masks to be worn in all public settings, regardless of vaccine status. Regarding physical distancing, there is no longer a physical distancing or barrier requirement, and spacing is thus recommended when possible. Those are the key high points. What I'd like to do now is introduce Tracy Green, who is the key consultant we have been working with on this project. And she is happy to answer any questions that we may have on this project. Tracy, are you available?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to join your meeting this morning.
Welcome. So do you have any comments to serve? Or are you just fielding all of the questions?
Um, well, and I do apologize, I had technical difficulty, so I'm not sure if the item was introduced yet.
It was, it was.
Sorry, Tracy. Yeah, I did, I did the, I did the introduction, Tracy, I've introduced the item and done the introductory comments. And it's now we're in the stage where we might have any questions for the item.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'd be happy to field any questions that you may have.
I'm going to ask my trustees on the board if you have any questions regarding this item. Yes, I have Jolina and then, I'm sorry, Board Member Grande and then Board Member Tarasova.
Thank you, President Haynes, and I, I am good for Jolina. I would like to draw particular attention to the fact that Michael Stewart was involved as part of the review of this plan, which represents a faculty version, because we are impacted definitely as a faculty member with the COVID-19 protocols. But I was wondering if there were any members of our collective bargaining units involved in the oversight, since this does have an impact on workplace practices.
Um, this went through our full governance process. So it was addressed and offered for public comment in, through the governance process. So that is the way opportunities, constituencies and members of the governance committee had an opportunity to, to review the plans to provide comment. In some cases, changes were made.
Thank you so much for involving all areas of Cal, Calbright on this because it is very impactful and I would like to say thank you very, very much.
Yeah, this one takes a village.
Trustee Sarah Tarasova.
And I'm good with Julia, I guess. So I just had two questions I wanted to ask you. I, it has not been clear to me from the document. It says employee self-assessment requirements for COVID-19 screening. Are employees filling out an online survey or how does that work in day-to-day environment according to this document?
Well, the, the self-assessment is not being done online or through a third-party app at this time. Typically because Calbright's a unique situation and it's remote, the employees are doing the self-check at home.
Okay, okay. And my second question is, I know there's a lot of sensitive information when employees are providing the vaccination status. Are we using any software for that and how do we keep track of this?
Actually, we have several ways that they can provide their vaccine card. And I will let you know that there is, this is the same as if they had to provide their TB results to the district upon hire and then every other, you know, every few years they have to indicate that they are still tuberculosis free. The board has a policy 7330 that talks about communicable diseases, which is the policy that this particular item would be covered under. And so we also have a statewide COVID database. So when you get your vaccines, you get a digital card that just basically provides the vaccine and the date. So there is no, none of the personal information that is required. So at this time, we have access to that database. And we do have employees that tend to want to choose to just send in a copy of their vaccine card, which is appropriate too. In human resources, this information is confidential. In their medicals, insert a file, it's not in their regular personnel file, it's in what they call the medical file. And so that is confidential.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from, from our Board of Trustees? So I have, I have a, a level of concern relative to, I recognize that most of the work that gets done is, is being done off-site, but those occasions where either executive committee folks, executive, the executive are meeting or where it is an all, an all-employee engagement sort of in-person. Is there, it, it, one is, is that outlined? And if so, would you walk me and my colleagues through what, what it is and whether it's permissive or whether it is required?
Okay. And in fact, the document does talk about masking guidelines. This is a living document and the CDPH, which is the California Public Department, Health Department, puts out a daily guidance and update. And so that's why this document is a living document. So if those major guidances change, it would be reflected within the document. So the areas of concern are really about the masking guidance, which at this time, it's been reauthorized to be, to require masking on all indoor activities. We can find this, every, every part of the document has a link to the most current guidance. So if it changes before we can publish it in the document, the guidance is available. And that masking guidance is required for all indoor or public settings, regardless of your vaccination status. So that's, that's the number one. The second one is physical distancing. Now, physical distancing has been removed. There are no requirements for the six feet apart or barriers, the plexiglass, all of that distancing has been removed. It is advised that you keep as much distance as possible within the limited space. So again, yes, that information is within the guidelines. And then the real question becomes the vaccination status. Is it mandatory? No, it isn't, especially for higher ed. The document talks, K-12 has had quite a bit of guidance that has been provided and requirements. And so the state order that came out on August 11th requires that K-12 faculty, staff and students not only get vaccinated, but provide that vaccination status to their schools. This particular, this guidance clearly states that it is not a requirement for childcare facilities or higher education. Higher education is trying to follow many of those because colleges are trying to bring back face-to-face classes, face-to-face services. They have onsite facilities. Now, in Calbright's unique situation is when we have an executive team meeting or a department wants to come together for face-to-face, or you even have colleagues that want to just meet and work on a project. The guidance is masking. The guidance is, it's not required to provide vaccination at this time. This is a board determination if they would like to require a, a mandated vaccine program. And there's, there's two ways to do that. One, the board can create a resolution, giving the president, CEO authority to put in a vaccine requirement for all face-to-face interactions. Or you can modify and add the COVID documentation information to the Board Policy 7330.
So thank you for, thank you for that clarification. At, at this point, I, I am, and for a couple of reasons, and I will, I will share all of that. I'm a no vote on, on this. We are still, you know, we're talking about not distant, no distancing requirement relative to the Omicron, where distance still makes a big difference. Where the, the infection rate where distance still makes a big difference, where the, the infection rate is almost double what Delta is, and there is no, no confirmation whether or not we're going to have another situation of another variant coming on, on our shores. So I, I, and I'm concerned that we don't know who's vaccinated and who's not, especially in, especially in, in those circumstances where we are bringing people together. I realize that we, we are requiring at this point masking. And I, I would have felt, and I, I feel badly in some respects for my no vote, but it's an adamant no vote. Had we had a situation where this could be a first reading of some sort, where we could have, at least out, where I could have outlined some of my concerns, and then it could be, it could have been brought back, or others, I mean, I, I, you know, I recognize that my colleagues may feel differently, but, and we can have an opportunity to discuss it here in public. That's wonderful, but I am a no vote only because I am very concerned about there not being a, a requirement as opposed to it being permissive. So with that, I, I see a hand up. Vice President Costa, you have a hand raised.
I do, and I think I, you, you made me think of something, President Haynes, which is, and it's probably a question for President Menon or our legal counsel, which is, it's a process question. So we have this policy before us, as has been noted, you know, clearly, any policy we would have adopted a year ago would be much different. This is a very fast-evolving kind of situation. And to the President's comment, you know, looking forward, I imagine there will be a lot of difference. So, you know, we're voting on this now, when would changes? What's the process for the changes in the policy? Does each change have to come back to the board? Or kind of what does that look like, given that this is likely to change many times?
I can speak to two things, and then if President Haynes will permit me, I'll also love to speak to her comments. So in terms of process change, I think we've clearly outlined in the document the guiding principles with which we will be making modifications, including guidance from where CDC is and where California Department of Public Health are. So that's the opportunity to make sure that, that we are constantly updating against the preeminent guidance that's being given through our public official channels. But I wanted to also just, before we get to the voting portion of this activity, maybe offer that, that this might be the space, and we would happily take the board's direction on, you know, changes and enhancement to this, to this policy. It feels very important that we have a baseline policy in place. If the sentiment of the board overwhelmingly reflects changes, including in the areas that President Haynes identified, you know, we certainly have the capabilities to, to implement those things. So that, you know, in case there was a question about our ability to operationalize, you know, collection around some of those vaccine disclosures or other elements, we do have capability to do that while it is not in this document right now. So I would, I would, I would encourage us to potentially explore avenues by which, you know, the full board may feel comfortable with adoption of, of what is a baseline policy, because absent a policy in person is, is quite concerning to us.
I have two hands raised. I can't, I can't see one person. I know Tom is here.
Oh, yeah, the presenter, President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Tracy, you have a comment to make, and then I'll take the question from our, our board member.
Hey, um, thank you. I had, what I wanted to point out is, and again, my apologies for not hearing the introduction of the CPP plan. The CPP plan that is presented today is not policy. It is required by all of our governing, it's required through our, our operational work with the Governor's Office, with the California Department of Health. And the plan is just literally how we explain how we're going to manage COVID in our unique environment. The policy actually comes later, depending on what the board's preference is, and whether they want to mandate vaccines or not mandate vaccines. So there's pros and cons to both, and I can appreciate, Madam President, your, your position on, on policy. I would hope that the board would have much more input about what it is, the guidance they want, and have a first reading, second reading, when it actually comes to policy. So I wanted to make that clarification, that the plan before you today is a requirement from the, the California Department of Health and Cal-OSHA, so that we give our employees information and the public, how does Cal-Bright look at managing COVID in their environment?
So let me respond to that. I really appreciate that, and so, and it has not been the practice. What has become, what has come before a Board of Trustees is a resolution. It outlines some broad values and where things are to go, and, and then the policy is written, but you've given us a policy to vote on, which is a very different situation. You have not given us a resolution that outlines broad issues on how to, how we will proceed with those, with those broad elements of things that are required, and, and what is the expectations for the, for the administration, i.e. the district or the college, to do relative to that, as it builds its, as it builds its policy. So that's my, that's my concern. It is the vote on this as if it were a resolution, and I am unwilling to do that, given the permissive, permissive nature of especially the in-person kinds of contacts. And so I appreciate that, that clarification. If you have a response, that's fine, and then I'm gonna take some other questions from our trustees.
Namita, would you mind actually weighing in on this one a little bit in terms of, again, like, any modifications that we might amend to the plan based on the board's recommendation, and then obviously subsequent implementation policies associated with the actual day-to-day governance of the activities under the plan?
Okay, so just to clarify, President Haynes, you're right that most of the time, any kind of adoption of a position by the board comes to the board as a resolution. However, under Cal-OSHA's direction, every public entity, schools and higher education entities have to adopt a COVID prevention plan, and this is the plan that we need to have in place per direction of Cal-OSHA, CDPH, and this is also required for workers' compensation purposes. So these are the, these are the plans, the basic document that we need to have in place. It does not come instead of a policy. The policy, as Tracy mentioned, will come later. There are going to be aspects that may be subject to collective bargaining, which we will deal with at the table. The plan does not, the plan that is in front of you is a legal requirement, and we need to have a plan rather than a resolution. And therefore, we are breaking away from our past practice and coming to you with a plan rather than just a resolution. I hope that makes sense.
It does, but I'm still not voting for it. Okay, all right, I, I, I just don't, I, you, you've, you've set up, you've said, you've set a, a set of guidelines in which I am in disagreement with, and and so, yeah, I'll leave that to my colleagues to make a decision on, on terms of urgency versus, you know, making certain that we have in place some requirements relative to in-person engagement. With that, I'm going to call on Mr. Anderson, our trustee Anderson.
Thank you very much. Can I just go back to the point that you made? Is this a legal requirement for us to do immediately?
It is a legal requirement, yes, to have a COVID prevention plan in place.
Okay, so, so from the standpoint of action, we need a plan in place. So to go to the chairwoman's concerns, could we modify the plan to address her concerns? Because it sounds like to me, we have to put a plan in place, one way or another. So if we could, you know, Madam Chair, if there are concerns that we could modify the plan to address it, but I think we have to take action today. And I'm, I'm in favor of putting a plan in place.
I am in favor of doing that as well. If, I, I, what I hate to have happen is that we're doing this sort of on the fly relative to this board meeting. If you're saying that there is, all the time is run out relative to bringing this back neither, at, at a special meeting that we're, we've already called for the third, and it's imperative, then we can tweak this now in a way that hopefully satisfies me and others relative to this. I'm absolutely agree, agree with that. I'm gonna take some other questions. Tom Epstein and our Vice President.
I just have a question about other districts. Does anyone know if the other community college districts have adopted vaccination requirements, and if so, kind of how strict are they?
Well, let me, I, I don't know about my colleagues. I mean, I do know some of that information, but it's, it's a big, it's a big system. I'm happy to share, but if there are others on Cal-Bright staff that are aware, and did some research on what other colleges are doing, I'd like to hear that piece too.
I can, I can jump in and just say, from my experience, there are a number in Eastern LA County that have full vaccine requirements, no exceptions. So, so it's pretty strict for, for a few of us.
And it's strict for, for Los Rios as well, and there are just, there are a number that have, have required it. No exceptions, but anyway. Amy, and, and then is it, is it Tracy? All right, thank you.
Um, just really briefly, I think I have a question probably for Namita, which is, this requirement by Cal-OSHA is not new. I mean, I completed this for Alameda County in December of last year. So I'd like you to speak a little bit to this question of, you know, the timeliness of us doing this, because I actually think it's very important that if we do it, we do it right. And I'm in agreement just on the order of operations that I think our president has, has brought up. I get what you guys are saying, it's like compliance-driven, we have to have a plan, but the board's policy should drive the plan. And I hear what she's saying, which is, you know, there's a debate, I think, amongst us, if we want to have a policy on vaccines, which should drive the plan. So if you could just speak to the timing, Namita, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Um, a, a really good question. I, I, I want to be very clear that we are not, I mean, we have to have a plan in place, but there is no definitive timing by which this needs to happen. So there is not that by January 31, it needs to be in place. So to the extent, if that's the board's preference and prerogative to take the policy discussion first, that's fine too, but I, I do wanna, I, I do wanna point out that the way this has played out in real life is that most districts had a plan. And then the COVID boost, the COVID vaccines became available, and then there was this idea of having the public policy dialogue around what kind of policy to adopt. So there are going to be new things that keep coming on, which will require you to modify your plan as well as your policy. So just because you take the policy first and then bring the plan doesn't mean that you, that is going to be, you know, a, a version that you're going to stick with forever. It's going to require moving.
I appreciate that, but I think, you know, Pam's point is one of like, as the policymaking body, I believe that we should have a policy statement, you know, that guides what the plan is and those iterations. It's like the philosophical filter that it goes through, anyway.
Thank you for that. Sorry, Tracy, do you have a comment to make, and then I'm going to go to one of our trustees?
Yes, if I may, I wanted to speak to your question about research and other community colleges and their requirements. When COVID first came on board, quite honestly, districts thought this was going to last a month or two, immediately started working on these plans to return to work, because everything went to an onsite or online venue, classes, workspaces. And so that is when the initial return-to-work plans were starting with, and they required the CPP plan with these elements that are in the table of contents. That's a Cal-OSHA requirement that came about, and many colleges have been working to try and go back to onsite course offerings, because Cal-Bright is unique. So the timing of this, because Cal-Bright doesn't necessarily have onsite facilities that they have to maintain for employees and/or classrooms that they have to interact with students, they, you've got very different, unique situations, and it is those situations you pointed out where you're going to have meetings or an all-hands or all-staff, and those guidelines need to be very outlined so that everybody understands what they are. And, and this is a living document, so it can change tomorrow at the board's crest if we needed to tweak it or, or add something to it. This is something that is posted on Cal-Bright's webpage. So it shows that we are complying with the Cal-OSHA requirements of having a plan. And like I said, it's a living document, it can be changed very easily.
Thank you. Felicia? You're on, you're still on mute. Can you hear, can you hear us, Felicia? You still on mute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
I like did something to my screen, and then I couldn't figure out how to find the unmute button. Thanks so much. I had a question about the kind of evolving litigation kind of world as it relates to COVID vaccines and mandating them. I, I'm just curious how you all are taking that into account. I mean, I know that, that, you know, the federal government, you know, worked to put a vaccine mandate in place, and it's been enjoined just last week. So I was just curious, as, as you all have developed this, and maybe this is a question for Namita. As you all have been developing your plans, how, how you've been thinking about the existing litigation landscape?
So the plan that currently exists actually models the options that are available under California law, with, you know, with the directives of CDPH, either vaccination or weekly testing. We don't have a vaccination mandate yet, but most of the litigation that is happening currently in California is happening on the student side, because you have districts that are imposing mandates for students, especially the, the really young students. So that's where the litigation is happening, but there is a new bill that Senator Pan introduced yesterday. So the legislative landscape on this is shifting as well. So, so the plan, the CPP as currently presented, basically models California law, which is giving employees the option to either be vaccinated or mandated. And what we are saying in the plan is that any, any changes that would happen, we are going to follow CDP, CDPH's guidance on whatever changes in requirements or boosters or threshold accessibility issues that'll come up, we will follow, follow that.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to better understand that.
Trustee Anderson.
Namita, can I ask a question? What has the UC and the state system done? Have they created their own policy, or are they following state regs?
UC has their own policy. They, they are following, they have mandated vaccines, and they are following their own policy and creating a new policy. But they also have a CPP, I mean, and there was a disconnect at one point before the vaccines became so available to everyone. There was a period of time where there was a disconnect, but their policy mandating vaccinations came afterwards.
Okay.
Amy, and then I have a comment to make.
It's kind of toward you, Madam President, which is, I'm trying to think of a path forward for us on this.
I am too.
And so, I mean, I think kind of the, the options, I just want to lay them out for the colleagues, and I think people can sort of weigh in, is, you know, that we can just vote. And I think people can sort of weigh in as, you know, that we can just vote on the, the plan as presented. The other option is if people are inclined, as you are, Madam President, we can direct staff to amend the plan to include some of the provisions that you have mentioned about vaccination requirements for those that are in person. Or third, we can ask them to bring back, you know, this item with some direction from us as well as the policy. And of course, there's some iterations amongst those things, but I think those are kind of the, the main themes that I see.
So I would like, thank you for that. I, I really appreciate your skills in, in this area. I, I would like to get a sense from my colleagues on the board around some direction to, to provide some direction to Calbright on this issue. I, I understand the need to be very honest. I understand the need to have a, a plan. And I am not opposed to having a plan. What I am concerned about is that we are now getting, we're now, because there's an objection, getting direction from the board. And this is where this has, it really has, it has to be vested there. And so I want to do that as expeditiously as possible, but I also want to make certain that the voices get heard. I, I see two hands up and so I'm going to call on Tom and, and, and then, and then, Tom, please speak, sorry.
I just wanted to hear from Ajita. What, what is your take on this? What does the staff feel? What is the, what do, as far as you know, what do the students feel? How would a, how would a vaccine mandate be received by these constituencies and the, and of the faculty, of course?
You know, I think there was extensive discussion internally among, on these matters. And this document reflects kind of the composite of all those different viewpoints. You know, I also take and appreciate that the board itself has, you know, has perspectives on it that, that makes sense and that are rational for us. I think our, our goal here is to make sure that in the cases where we can be in person, we can do so safely, safely and effectively. So, you know, I think we're, we're happy to take the board's direction on this. We're also in a position to, to implement anything that the board, within reason, might throw our way with respect to any of these matters. And, you know, I think they are a hard set of decisions. I can, I can tell you that I think there's probably some split in the organization regarding this. You know, not uncharacteristic of other organizations. So, you know, I think in any case, in some cases, people will feel less safe in the absence of a vaccine mandate and, and/or disclosure requirement, meeting in person. In other cases, feel, people will feel that's an intrusive amount of medical information that they may be provided. So, you know, I think we'll be prepared to communicate the decision of the board down the chain. We're, we'll be prepared to implement should such a requirement be required either on the disclosure side or on the, the vaccine side.
Bill, you have your hand raised.
Yeah. So I, I would like to see this come back in February, even if it's to the executive committee. I think there's probably a little more, more vetting and development of this that we'd want to see. And, and including, you know, particularly for those who have a need to meet in person, having some either vaccine requirement outright with, with only the, the statutory exemptions or a very recent rapid test, right? I, I think we could, we could feel confident that there'd be a safe environment in either case. But I think we probably need to have a little more discussion with the employee groups also. But then incorporating as much of, of President Ains' opinion on this, I think is, as we need. I'm, I'm comfortable with doing a complete vaccination requirement, but also I understand that some employee groups might want to have PCR tests as an option.
Tom?
Are going to consider this. I think we ought, if we are going to consider this, I think we also ought to determine whether, what fully vaccinated means, whether it's two shots or three, and that should be something that people should kick around if, if we're going to bring this back.
I appreciate that too. Is there any, so President Minion, do, do you have enough direction with this conversation to be able to bring back something to us?
I think so. The, the one thing I just wanted to ask about was disclosure. So I, I can see the general direction unless there's objection on the board around this idea of generally having vaccine requirement, potentially discussing and offering the option of testing if, you know, in lieu of, of a requirement, so we can bring forward those options. And then this definition of fully vaccinated per Tom's questions of what is the baseline? I think that, so the question I just sort of had is on the, on the disclosure side of that. We think we're not, that the plan does not currently reflect a disclosure requirement and would love some traction on the board in terms of their thoughts in that regard.
That, that would be very helpful. I, I can tell you from my experience that we started off with the man, the mandate of having the two shots. And as we go, and we are still doing most of our, 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 our teaching online. And I recognize that the, the science is changing, even as I am speaking right now, relative to what we know and, and, and the, the new information that's out there. So I understand the challenges with that. And so now, but now many of our colleges are having to go back and asking whether, whether or not our employees are, have that booster shot. Because that is now becoming the norm of what is considered fully vaccinated. And it wasn't before. And so I, I think that should be a consideration, as Tom said. Bill, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I was, I was going to concur with you there. Based on the data, I, I think a minimum of the, the two shots. And then let's let the, let's let the science kind of direct when we end up needing to require the boosters. I would also note that those folks who, who would not be working in person at all, right? Would only ever really be working remotely. I, I don't necessarily know that we would need to have a, a strict requirement on this for those folks, right? This is for those people who are going to be exposing each other in the workplace, I think is my main concern.
That's right. I have a hand raised from trustee Ogden.
Hi, everyone. Apologies for not being on camera today, but thanks for the opportunity to speak into this. Just quickly, I know there was a lot of conversation in the last couple of meetings, but in particular, I want to say it was about two meetings ago when we were talking about Calbright beginning to make this shift to thinking about ourselves more as a stand-up, world-class technology company and less as a sort of traditional educational institution. And coming from that industry, I just want to mention that technology companies are having no problems taking firm stances on these sorts of requirements. And if we are indeed thinking of ourselves differently in that way and sort of a progressive way, this is an opportunity to demonstrate that. And so just want to appreciate President Haynes for bringing this conversation to light and allowing folks to comment on it. I think it's a, I think it's an important one and really does speak to who we want to be, not just who we are allowed to be. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now. This is, this has been a discussion. There has not been, so, and what I'm hearing is that we are not going to vote on this particular item. And Namita, I need you to make certain that I'm within the, the framework. We will not be voting on this item. We, we have asked Calbright staff to, to go back and given the, the direction and the issues raised, come back with a resolution of, of sorts to vote on that will, that will make certain that we have captured in the plan the, the will of, of the board. And that is what we're going to vote on the next time. Would that be correct? Have I encompassed it all? Okay. Well, I, first I want to thank you for your input and, and your patience in, in this conversation. It is a critically important one. And I just want to make certain that, that Calbright is on the right path and doing it as we, we should and getting, getting the, the comments and the concerns of, of your board. Because I do want us to, I absolutely want us to have a plan. And I want us all to be very, very safe. So with that, I think we're going to move on to.
President Haynes, I just wanted to say that there was no public comment.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. So we're going to leave that one as is, and we're going to move on to 4.3, which is the resolution to recognize the establishment. This is good news. The establishment of a student body organization. And we have Ted Lie, who is going to be presenting on this item.
President Haynes, Vice President Costa and, and members of the board. Let me just get everything set. I have a short presentation just highlighting some of the different work that's been done. Before I begin, I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge the hard work that's been done by Katie Myers, our student engagement specialist, as well as Cindy Smith. You know, they've been working very hard looking at how to ensure that we can create a student body organization that has a voice, but also decreases the barriers to entry because we are a unique situ, we are in a unique situation. So with that, I just.
Sorry, just before we start, I, I also would be remiss if we didn't give a, a special thanks also to the statewide student senate and our student trustees who have been extraordinarily in helping us navigate through some of the considerations in the ways in which we need to adapt for, for students to have meaningful participation, both in self-advocacy on campus, but also their self-advocacy statewide. And it makes very explicit something that is implicit and intuitive to us at the institution around the importance of having an empowered student voice at the table. So just thanks to those groups. And lastly, thanks to the chancellor's office, who also has provided technical assistance to us with respect to how some of the mechanics of this can possibly work.
Thank you so much, absolutely. So we know that Calbright students are unique, working adults. They're going through programs in order to gain new skills and either move up in the current profession or switch to a new career. So in, in that way, there are a number of challenges. And one of them is the time spent here at Calbright, where they may not be in a program as long as what is previously dictated to participate in student government. So one of the results of this is that we needed to find a way to provide for that flexibility for student support and engagement and leadership opportunities that doesn't necessarily extend their time in their primary academic program, but is a value add, that it adds to them in terms of their branding, in terms of their transferable skills for their professions. And then that means opportunities for students to develop leadership skills, career life skills, but contextualized through the lens of career readiness and workforce development. Because that predominantly is, is why students are with us. There are four challenges that we wanted to address here and, and move forward on, and that's the structure. And this is in accordance with education code section 72673. Basically, we're moving the semester hours and credit requirements for participating in student government, but still at the same time remaining in alignment with the SSCCC policies and bylaws. And by doing that, we're then being able, we're able to address that idea of advocacy and voice, where students are able to participate in the development of college policies and procedures and weigh in on things that could improve their, the support and services to them. That of course means some representation on college committees and task forces and participation in the SSCCC statewide as well. And then in terms of voice, making sure that the student government is recognized as the official student voice at Calbright College, and then providing the student leaders with the tools and training to connect with and activate the student community to engage in participatory governance and advocacy. And then finally, of course, alignment. All this would then help them be aligned with the SSCCC mission activities, but alignment also with Calbright's mission and values. And as I mentioned earlier, we feel it's extremely important that their activities are contextualized in terms of outcomes through the lens of skills attainment, career readiness, so that they are able to add this to their branding and move forward in their career to be able to say that they've been in leadership positions. And exactly what things, what other transferable skills like empathy were developed or problem solving, et cetera, collaboration. So next steps, I wanted to make sure you know that this is of course not the end. We need to create some BPs and Ap's to help guide the operation of the Calbright College Student Body Organization. We have an initial bylaws and, and constitution, but we need to finalize it. And we need students to be involved in that process as well. And then of course, identify student representation placement on committees and task forces and, and really see what can move the needle in terms of giving them that voice. In terms of communicating, we're already doing this. Part of the big step, as you know, was developing a student community. And that is, you know, growing all the time. We, we have increased, now I'm blanking on the exact number, over 400% in terms of our participation in our student Slack. And we've already got some students who are interested in improving the Slack community. So that's a first step, getting the voices, getting the feedback, and then being able to find out who is interested in student government participation as well. And really what this means is, one of our next steps is implementing an actual communications plan for current students to inform, educate and ask for participation, participation in the student body organization. And then be able to have certain talking points for incoming students as well to understand that this is an opportunity for them, for their pathway, but also for their growth as well. So with that, I hope that I provided some background information and some next steps on what we're planning to do. And we encourage you to, to vote in favor of this resolution.
So thank you so much for that presentation. Are there any questions from our trustees? Ulya, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you. It will be not a question, but rather than a comment. So thank you, Ted, for this amazing presentation. We know that Calbright at its core is a fundamentally different institution than its counterparts in California Community College system. The students it aims to serve, the structures of its student services, and most obviously, the fact that it is completely online separates Calbright from the rest. That said, there are concepts of the California Community College system that Calbright, if it seeks to become a thriving addition, must adopt. And shared governance is one of it, if not the most important concepts. Indeed, shared governance may be the backbone of the system itself. Now that the board has the pleasure to hear constituency reports from the Academic Senate and Faculty Association, this agenda item is historical for all student population at Calbright. Today, in front of you is the document that recognizes the establishment of the student body organization at Calbright. Now, two years ago, result of diligent work of nine amazing student leaders in California that had the vision and commitment to uplift the student voice at Calbright. I shared with you in July meeting that it is my dream to see Calbright Associated Student Organization report as a part of the agenda in the near future. Today, we're one step closer to it. Board member Grande reminded us today how important it is to include all the stakeholders in the conversation and decision-making processes for a thriving institution. Therefore, I'm delighted to quote one of the resolves that state, "At least one member of the Calbright Student Body Association shall serve as student representative on each college and district committee or task force." Once again, I really appreciate all the work that is put into the unique model and forward-thinking at Calbright that really has the student at the center in every decision made at Calbright. In particular, I would like to thank President Minon, President Haynes, Katie Myers, and the executive team of Calbright for relentless commitment to the student voice. Hence, this is our next crucial step towards the empowering students' voice at Calbright and by no means the end. And I just humbly hope for the board's support on this resolution.
Thank you for those comments. Member Grande.
I couldn't have said it better myself, Member Tarasova. You did such a. I couldn't have said it better myself, Member Tarasova. You did such an amazing job providing much of the perspective that I was going to, to bring to light. But I do want to definitely encourage President Manon and all of our administrators to recognize that the Calbright student is different. They are working adults that bring a host of experiences with them that are absolutely vital on shared governance, hiring committees, and participatory governance processes because they bring so much more than a new high school graduate coming into a typical community college that we have an untapped potential to actually hire who are our students into these roles. And this is a tremendous opportunity. So please make sure that the student voice is not only uplifted in the organization that they are directing, but that they direct the organization that we are creating.
Thank you. Member Shabazian.
Thank you. I'm not sure how to ask this, but I would, I would ideally like some reassurance from hearing directly from a student that they were involved in in either writing this or gave some substantive feedback to it. Can anyone speak to to that?
Actually, Julia maybe even could speak nicely. So because we don't yet have a formed student body, we relied on support and direction from the group of student leaders with the statewide Student Senate as well as our former trustee, Colin Fitzgerald and Julia and now our new trustee Joshua Elizondo. So they were very formative. They had worked with a group of Calbright students also who had represented interest in, in some of these activities. And so even though this is at the formative stages, it has been very much guided by a very cooperative partnership and understanding of those respective parties.
Yeah, I couldn't have said it better. A lot of students have been involved in this process who know about how the student organization should be formed and what are the procedures to it. And also I'm in constant conversation with Katie Myers to actually have a date and set and meet up with Calbright students and how engage in the conversation. As today, we're hopefully going to adopt this resolution as a next step towards the formation of organizations. Those, the next step would be to actually meet with students and start talking about, okay, we have some preliminary documents that we have put in place as student leaders. But what actually do you need as student body of totally unique students in California?
And I'll add, Julia, if you'll permit me, I'll add a little bit more color to it too. You know, one of the things that we've been discovering is when we introduce the concept of student government, we also want to do it in an accessible way. So really understanding what the value proposition is of being involved in a lot of these efforts becomes central to having meaningful participation from students in, in these kinds of formalized roles. And so, you know, Katie, with, with guidance from, from our trustees and others have, has really provided vision around that. You know, with, with, along with Ted and, and others in the college, but you know, there's, there's both been a lot of input, but I think there's also lots of ways in which we're all open to adapt ourselves to make sure that our student population can meaningfully participate in, in all of the responsibilities, but also the, the rights that they're afforded under our, under our statutes.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other, one, one, one question and a comment. There's a lot of resolves here, but I think it's on the second page of resolves. There's one that says, let's see, it's the third one on page three. Calbright College Student Trustee shall serve as the liaison. So in my understanding that there would not be a president of the student body organization that, that comes and speaks at the, at these meetings.
So it is actually our hope to have a president, but we want to make sure, we want to ensure that the people who are participating are able to vote on that themselves and, and vote on who is sort of the spokesperson representative. So we intentionally kept that a little bit more open ended.
Okay, so that's yet to be determined whether we would have a president coming to those meetings.
It is the goal to have the president coming to the meeting. Yeah.
It's not formed yet, Roy. It hasn't been formed yet.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I was just looking for clarity on that, on that resolve because it says that that the trustee shall serve as the liaisons. So clarity there. This is a minor point, but on one of the resolves, it's the second one from the bottom on that same page. It talks about a resolve that these outcomes will be contextualized through the lens of career readiness and workforce development. I think that's an excellent point. If I were writing this, I wouldn't have made that a resolve. It seems like more of a conceptual point to be made as a whereas. Would the, would the students be bound by this because the board adopted it as a resolution and if they wanted to go in a direction, different direction, they couldn't?
I, I don't think that it's necessarily that they'd be bound to it. I mean, I believe that everyone joins organizations and participates for different reasons and intrinsically motivated for different reasons. We just wanted to make sure that that is called out because we understand that with our student body, the majority of them are here for that context of career advancement. And so to get meaningful participation, we knew that we would intentionally need to call that out so that we make the connection. So it doesn't feel like an extra thing, but rather an additional thing that amplifies their current journey.
Thank you. Thanks for helping me through this. I strongly support this and I'm really looking forward to some solid student representation here. I just wanted to make sure and feel comfortable with what we've got here. So thanks for everyone's.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Joshua Elizondo, trustee. You have, you have a hand up?
Yes, good morning still, everybody. I, I echo all the sentiments that have been said by all the other trustees. I really look forward to the student participation coming forward with this resolution and hopefully we can start having students engage with us quickly. I did want to provide just some point of clarity and understanding maybe for trustee Shabazian. Part of the reason why we, or my suggestion in our meetings, what to not have the president and the student trustee be the same person, a lot of colleges have that be the same person was because we're not students of Calbright. And it didn't make sense for us to be the president of an organization that's supposed to represent the student body of that school. And so ultimately, the decision was that we would be liaisons and not part of the student government because we didn't feel as if we would accurately represent that student population. So that was the reasoning behind that verbiage. And then in the long term, I do think as a, as a trustee, just pointing out something that might be something to consider. Eventually, as bog student members, we may not be the right members to be student trustees for Calbright. Because ultimately, those students are represented by the students of their population. And it's important for us to note that as their student government is forming, potentially in the future, a student trustee for Calbright should be a student of Calbright.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's an important one. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there any public comment on this issue?
President Haynes, there is no public comment and I just wanted to do a time check. We are at 11:47.
I, I tried to tell these people that, you know, I wanted to get them out by 12 noon, but they have not been listening to me. Anyway, but we're going to work toward it. So we don't have any public comments. So can we get a roll call? Can I get a motion and a second on this item?
So moved.
Who's moving?
Tarasova moved.
Thank you. And who's second?
Josh or Elizondo.
Okay, I have, thank you so much. I have a motion and a second. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguilado. Hildegard.
Our technological difficulties, difficulties. Yay and I.
Thank you. Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein. Felicia Escobar Correo.
An enthusiastic I.
Jelena Grande.
I second Correo and enthusiastic I.
Pamela Haynes.
Ditto ditto, I.
Kevin Hall.
I.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Irma Ogwen.
I.
Jennifer Perry.
I.
Bill Rawlings.
Yes.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
For the student voice, it's always an I.
Thank you. Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. We're on our last action item. It's four point four. It's the second addendum to the professional services agreement with Amica Systems, Inc. And we have Brendan O'Callahan, who will be presenting on this item.
Thank you, Madam President and Vice President. Brendan O'Callahan, I'm the Vice President of Marketing Communications and External Affairs and also leading the technology team in the interim capacity at the moment. First, I just wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone on the technology team. With the departure of our CTO and Director of IT, we have been working very diligently to, to build out and then accommodate all of the technical components of this growing enrollment that President Manon talked about earlier today and all of the support systems. And so this, this agreement, this contract, this addendum extension is through the end of the fiscal year, just a couple more months here. The, the individual who has been working with Calbright has been fully integrated into our systems. He understands the, you know, who, who his colleagues are, all of Calbright Systems, our sales force and, and all of those environments. And he would be exceptionally helpful as we continue on while we also simultaneously work towards expanding the capacity of our tech team. We had a Director of Information System start at the end of 2021. A VP of Engineer, Paul, who, this is his first board meeting here, started earlier this month. And so all of, all that we're simultaneously building our internal capacity, but need, need some assistance, some highly specialized expertise here to help, help bridge the gap in the coming months through the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm going to ask my board members if you have any, any questions for regarding this presentation. I don't see any hands raised. I'm going to go to public comment. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Well, okay, then can I get a motion and a second? Motion first.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Perry. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second, Aguilado.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take Ms. Aguilago's a second. And can I get a roll call vote?
Hildegard Aguilado.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haynes.
I.
Kevin Hall.
I.
Irma Ogwen.
I.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
I.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
And Julia Tarasova.
I.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. We have completed our action items. We're going to Information and Reports 5.1, which is our report on contracts and purchases. Are there any questions? Oh, okay, Jeff, you can talk about this, but we don't have a lot to talk about. But if you have something to talk about, please do it now.
No, Madam President, you have 13 new professional service agreements, seven new, I'm sorry, those are amendments, seven new personal service agreements, professional service agreements, three consulting service agreements and an extension. And $130,829 in expenses.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the brevity of that. Are there any questions regarding any of these contracts that our trustees have? I do not see any hands. Oh, I do see one. Tom.
I hate to rain on the parade of urgency here, but
Please, go ahead.
But there's a couple of ones I just was curious about. Under the, under the purchases, I'm just curious what CDW miscellaneous is for 38,000?
Yes, that's, that's a, that's our laptop purchases. We're, we're.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's all I need to know. And what is Calbright GP AVP checks for 126,000? Or is, is that just all, everything else added up?
That's, that's everything. Yeah, that's.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, is there any, we don't have. Given that, that it's just a report. And so, thank you. And we're now going to move to constituency reports. We have no report from the Calbright Academic Senate. And the next re, report would be the Calbright Faculty Association. And we have Ashley Odell.
President Haynes, trustee Shabazian's hand is raised.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Yes, trustee Shabazian.
I don't necessarily need an answer today, but I did want to follow up on a comment from the Academic Center report from last time. There was a question, there was a, a point made about the, the learning management system. And at some point, it'd be helpful to, to hear about what learning management system we're currently using. And when would be the next, like, do we have a contract with that company? When would be the next opportunity to reevaluate that? And then most importantly, what would be the process for that and for faculty involvement in that kind of decision?
So usually, let me just say typically in our constituency reports, that direction comes to, and you did it right. It comes back to the CEO and president. And certainly we'll be glad to talk to you about what that might be.
Yes. I will happily follow up.
Great. So is Ashley Odell here to present the report?
I'm here.
Oh, great. Please.
Hello, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and a team of board. I'm happy to provide a report today on the activities of the Calbright Faculty Association. I'm going to start with an overview of the faculty tenure evaluation process. It was developed under the MOU in collaboration with CFA and administration, and it's largely concluded. The initial process was undertaken with the understanding that we may need to make some adjustments for future years. And in fact, it did provide opportunity to excuse me, it did provide opportunity to explore how we might iterate the next round for a more clear, equitable and meaningful evaluation. We're grateful for all the hard, hard work and coordination on both the part of the faculty and evaluators in navigating the challenges of this first round of a crucial part of the faculty professional journey. I also have a bargaining update for you. As mentioned in a previous board meeting, a salary schedule proposal was presented based on extensive research and benchmarking for equitable pay for faculty with three potential templates to explore. The current discussion surrounds brainstorming ideas around work hours and nuances of the schedule. And the next bargaining session takes place on February 2nd. And finally, I wish to make a statement of support for the California School Employees Association, Calbright 53 Chapter. The Faculty Association wants to acknowledge the efforts of Calbright's classified staff to organize a union. We fully support our classified colleagues in these efforts and we hope that Calbright management will swiftly recognize their union because ultimately Calbright is made stronger by its organized employees. We look forward to working together, faculty and classified, continue building a Calbright that is both a great place to work and a transformative place for our students to learn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So now we go to public forum. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to the board?
President Haynes, there are no raised hands, no public comment.
Well, I'll be doggone. It's eleven fifty-eight. So I am happy to adjourn this meeting and to thank my colleagues for all of your attention and all of your comments. It helps us all make really good decisions. Have a great day.